A couple of notes of importance as well. Again, please, if you're just joining us, turn off your cellphone. We are streaming this and it will be available on websites at carolinapublicpress.org, at the League of Women Voters site, which is ablwd.org, and also the NC Voter Education Project. And what is that site again? NCvotereducation.com?
NCvotered.com.
NCvotered.com. We also have one more forum after tonight. This is the third in the series of four. I want to thank the League of Women Voters for asking me to moderate, but also, more importantly, for putting these things on. It's really, really important. Too often, people go to the booth uneducated, without knowing, really, they don't face on what they hear or what they think. But here's your opportunity to get answers to the questions that you want. We have one more forum, and that is next week on the 15th, also Monday, 6:30. It is for Buckham County Commission District 3 and State House District 116. It will take place at the Scottsdale Fire Department on Miller Road. That is where Long Schulz meets Hendersonville Road. So that will be the last forum of this series. All right, we're going to go ahead and start, and we'll start with you, Ms. Frost. Ellen Frost, Mike Fryer, Christina Kelly Merrill, and Carol Weir Peterson. Ms. Frost?
Yes, my name is Ellen Frost, and first I want to take a second just to thank the League and all the media for being here. I think voter awareness is of utmost importance. I am a small business owner from Black Mountain. I moved to North Carolina in 1995. I'm a mother and grandmother. I adore Buckham County, and I adore children, and that's why I chose to run for county commission. I've been a small business owner all my life. I talk the talk and walk the walk. I believe in a living wage, and all our employees have benefited or paid a living wage and have health benefits. I think education and economic development is what will drive our county forward, and I think we need to do everything we can to encourage jobs and also protecting the environment and change the paradigm so that it's not just a job, but it's a living wage job. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Frost. Mr. Fryer?
Thank you for having me here. My name is Mike Fryer. I have a beautiful life there, and I've just spent maybe 40 years here, a few more days. I appreciate her. I have two daughters. I've been in Buckham County for 49 years. I've been a businessman for 32 years in Buckham County. I had stock car racing engine business, and now I just basically hope to sell automobiles. But I built stock car motors for 27 years. I was in racing for over 37 years. As far as bringing education, I think education is, we have to have it, but the simple fact is where everybody can't be educated to pour concrete, everybody can't be educated to work on automobiles. There's technical schools, but then you have schools like I went to. A gentleman named Ben Joe Matthews, I went to work for him for $3.25 an hour. I learned how to build race cars, how to build race engines, and winning businesses myself in 1980. So I want to support the schools, and I want to support the kids 140 percent. But the fact is, in times, we have to watch where money goes. And right now, you know, there's talk a minute ago about what went to stimulus, went away, and then you went away. They had 10 years' worth of stimulus money. So as Nathan says, the government can bring money to state banks in any county. So I want to support the kids, but there's other things that children need to do because a lot of educated people are sitting at home. Thank you.
There's a second microphone as well, so you can kind of share. It's Kelly. I'm sorry, Ms. Merrill. Christina Kelly.
That is fine, ma'am. I just want to thank everyone also for giving us this opportunity to express the reasons why we're running for county commissioner. My name's Christina Kelly Merrill, and I've lived in Buckham County for nearly two decades. I moved from Southern California, where I went to Pepperdine University and worked as a reporter for ABC and KFWB in Los Angeles. I found myself a single mother unexpectedly with a two-year-old and a five-year-old, and was looking for a better place to raise my children by myself. So I sent several takes out, got a job here, and moved across the USA as a single mom with two little boys, and was so impressed with the affordable cost of living, the wonderful genuine people, and the amazing schools. I had a son who was told, that I was told in California was just going to fall through the cracks. Well, our schools here picked him up and gave him the resources he needed. He went on to Western Carolina and now works, follows in his mom's footsteps and works for Clear Channel as an account executive. I did continue my broadcasting career here in Western North Carolina for over a decade. I was an honorary personality for Clear Channel. I now have my own production and marketing company, and my passion is to grow local business. I had the opportunity to get out and meet a lot of small entrepreneurs, and I really became passionate and wanted to use my creativity to help that. And that's one of the main reasons why I'm running for county commission, because I would like to see our county restored to that affordable place to live, where our businesses are once again, throughout the, growing and thriving. And I do think that a way to do that is to maybe look at not spending the kind of money that we are still, we can sustain our debt and our people can afford to live here. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Peterson.
Thank you. We appreciate everyone being here tonight, the folks who are in attendance, and of course the folks who will be privy to hear this broadcast and read it back in our local papers. My name is Carol Peterson. I'm a Buckham County native, come from a family that has been interested in public service for decades. I'm a retired school teacher. My husband and I both have worked in both Buckham County and Asheville City Schools. Retired as the vocational director for the Asheville City Schools. My husband retires the principal at Anika High School. My interests are in the field of education. We live on a farm, raise poe herder beef cattle. We belong to Central United Methodist Church. I'm on the board of trustees at Central Church. I'm on the board of trustees at Asheville-Buckham Technical Community College. My husband is on the board at UNC Asheville, so we have some lively educational discussions at our house. I think you can see that one of my prime interests is education. Since I've been on the Board of Commissioners, I have been a person who has pushed the environmental, the beauty that we have here in Buckham County and conservation of land here. The fact that we live on a farm, I realize the importance of local food. My husband's not here tonight because he's actually with our square dance team. We both work with the Mountain Dance and Folk Festival, with the Folk Heritage Committee and using chindig on the green. So our dance team is practicing tonight, so we're interested in keeping that local culture alive. I'm on the Board of Smart Start, Juvenile Crime Prevention Committee, and also the Railroad Front Redevelopment Commission. Appreciate the work that Mayor Lloyd did on this, Mayor Lennard did on Railroad Front Redevelopment. Thank you for being here tonight. Look forward to the questions.
All right, we're going to go ahead and start. We'll start with you, Ms. Frost. What do you consider the biggest issue facing the county right now, and how would you address it?
I think the biggest issue facing the county is the economy. I think, and living wage jobs, I will say living wage jobs until Carol's cows come home. If we have Oakley Elementary School, 85 percent of the children there are in a reduced or free lunch program. Living wage salary is $9.85 an hour with health insurance and $11.35 without. I think that's something we can change and we can work toward. If we have a living wage, economy, a lot of problems will finish.
Thank you, Mr. Fryer.
Quick question, please.
Certainly. What do you consider the biggest issue facing the county right now, and how would you address it?
Well, right now, the county has a lot of issues. They took on a lot of debt during the recession, and as Ms. Frost says, living wage. Well, we need jobs. We need factories in here. Look what we've lost over the years. Ball Brothers, Maripanica, or BSAF, whatever you want to call them. Tons of plants have left, and that was living wage jobs. We're fighting to get stuff back. We want people to work, but the county and the city have to quit putting so many restrictions on people where they cannot be able to bring business in. We need business in the Swallow Valley, Bacon and Alimbergo. So business is a big thing in there. But when you're going into debt, like this county's going into debt during this period, when Buckham County, 13 percent used to be the number for DSS for its food stamps and stuff. In the last three years, it's gone up to 23 percent. 23 percent is almost a quarter of Buckham County on food stamps or services from the county. So the main thing is we need jobs and we need taxpayers to pay taxes.
Fryer, can you give very much? Ms. Merrill?
I definitely agree that we have a lot of citizens who have lost their homes, they've lost their jobs, and one of our biggest exports here in Western North Carolina are educated students. I myself am an example of putting my sons through college and had to go enough to other places to get a job. My son went to Clare Channel. That's a straight commission job, and a lot of people that work, used to work in those jobs, they make a living off of small businesses, because small businesses need to advertise to grow. But if you can't thrive because of the restrictions, then you can advertise, and for example, an account executive can't get a job and make a living here, so they have to go down the road to Greenville. So I agree that we need jobs, but in order to do that, we have to grow and support our local businesses, and when we bring in new jobs, we need to make sure that they're also high-quality jobs, not just one particular industry. We need, we need jobs for not only our graduates of our four universities, but our tech students as well.
Thank you, Ms. Peterson.
Thank you for the question. I think there's no question that the biggest need that we have here is good-paying jobs for our citizens, and that ties in directly to having an educational system here that helps people be prepared for the jobs that do come in. Asheville-Buckham Technical Community College does a great job if, when new businesses are coming into Buckham County, making sure that they have the skills that they need in order to, in order to do those jobs. So jobs in hand in glove with an educational institution, that works nicely. Thank you.
All right, thank you. We will start with you, Mr. Fryer. Do you consider yourself a progressive? Why or why not?
No, I'm not a progressive. I'm kind of conservative, because on the progressive side, I see that, you know, conservatives want to protect water, they want to protect everything, air, you know, but no, there's too many things that happen on the progressive side. You know, everybody wants walkways, everybody wants these ways, everybody wants greenways. Everybody's wants. I had children, and every now and then I'd tell them, no, you can't have that candy because we do not have the money for it. So being stable and doing the right things, but when it gets to the point where you do not have money to be able to do so, and the wants have to stop. So that's where I'm at.
Thank you, Ms. Merrill.
I'm glad that this question was asked, because most people know I am a fiscal conservative, but that doesn't, I really, and most people I know are really tired of the labels, and you know, there's a lot of things about me and about the people that I know that some people might call progressive. I love the arts. I'm a painter. I think that that's one of the things that has drawn people to Western North Carolina at Nashville, are the arts. And I think there's a stigma that if you're conservative fiscally, that you can't appreciate the same things that someone who might be an independent or a different party affiliation. And that's not necessarily true. I'm going to stand strong on my fiscal ground, but there's a lot more to be a conservative fiscal candidate than the stereotype. So I just wanted to clarify that.
Ms. Peterson.
Very good question. I spoke to a friend not too many days ago, Dwight Buckner downtown. He said, Carol, I am going to be a member of a group that's called the No Labels Group. And that's, I'm sort of interested in that. I think we are to the point that we're putting labels on people about everything. I'm progressive about things, I'm some things, I'm conservative about some things. And I think what you're looking for in a county commissioner is a person who can look at the situation and depending on that situation, make, make the decision that, that is needed in that particular situation. Progressive about some things, conservative about some things. But let's go to no labels. I like that much.
All right, thank you, Ms. Frost.
I think some of my employees might say that I'm extremely conservative sometimes when it comes to giving races. I think others might think I'm as liberal as can be. I think I have very strong core values that want children not to have to worry about eating, that children to go to a safe school where they're not discriminated against, so when they leave school, they can have jobs. If that calls me a progressive, so be it. If that calls me a conservative, so be it. But I kind of agree about the no labels. Thank you.
All right, we're going to start with you, Ms. Merrill. This is a multi-part question, so we'll try and get it all in. Would you support adding sexual orientation and gender identity to the county's non-discrimination clause? Would you support offering domestic partner benefits to county employees? If not, what should the county do to protect the rights of LGBT citizens?
Okay, so on the first part of that question, would I support a change in the current, would you support adding sexual orientation and gender identity to the county's non-discrimination clause? Okay, well, I absolutely don't think that anyone should be bullied or discriminated against in any workplace for any reason whatsoever, but I do believe that the county has a very comprehensive clause that is anti, for anti-discrimination that covers that. And the second part of the question?
Would you support offering domestic partner benefits to county employees?
Again, being a fiscal conservative, if we extend benefits to non-married people, it will cost our taxpayers and our citizens more money, so for that reason, I would not support it. Thank you.
The first question. I think it's important for folks to know that we do have nondiscriminatory ordinance in the Buckham County personnel policy, and we have an open door policy that any, any person who is employed by Buckham County can report any type of discrimination to the manager. And I think that that's well-known throughout our county workforce. And if someone is within the hearing of my voice thinks that, that there is discrimination going on with them and they're a county employee, I urge them not to, not to break stride getting to the county manager and telling that manager about that. The second part of the question, this is a very controversial, complex, and sensitive issue. Very complex, and I'm not in favor of adding domestic partner benefits to the county personnel policy.
Ms. Frost?
Yes and yes. I would support adding discrimination clause, because if it's not an issue, then it won't come up. But I think we have to protect employees from ever feeling that they're discriminated against. As far as domestic partnerships benefits, yes. The city of Charlotte grants domestic partner benefits, and guess how many they grant? There's a total of seven. I think it's a very clear issue, and I'm fully supportive of it.
Thank you, Mr. Fryer.
No, on the first, you know, because they do have things in place for us, and it goes back to the same thing. You're talking about discrimination. Many years ago, I was talking to a gentleman that ran the Wachovia Bank, and his words to me was, you know, I said, what about if you want to fire a woman? And he said, what if you want to fire a woman, or a black man, or a white woman, you have to have six months' worth of documentations. I said, well, I'm going to take it to fire a white guy. He said, in the morning. So, no, they have protections, and a lot of things, I've got 30 seconds, but a lot of things, my brother Art Fryer ran the collect cost scandals, which you understand, and it was gay, and he wanted his own, you know, he didn't want anything from anyone. He said he was the right, he wanted to be. He did not want to get married, and he didn't need anything from anyone. So in far as domestic partnerships, it's no on that too, because that goes back to the same thing. You know, if there's two people of the same gender, they should be able to afford their own insurance.
All right, yes, sir. We will start with you, Ms. Peterson. What is the role of the county in creating jobs? Would you support tax incentives to more business?
The role of the county in, in creating jobs is to work hand in glove with the Asheville Area Chamber of Commerce, which we do through our economic development incentives program. I do support incentives. I think it's important for, that's really the name of the game as far as bringing jobs into the county. You have to have reasons for the folks to come, you know, if you go to South Carolina or other, other states that border us, or other counties within North Carolina, 30 seconds, that the name of the game is the incentive package. We have a very strict incentive package in Buckham County. The folks who get the incentives and come here with their businesses adhere to certain rules and regulations that are set out before them. If they do not meet those rules and regulations, there's what we call a clawback phase, meaning that, that the incentive that was promised to them, they do not get, and we keep very strict tabs on that. But yes, I do support incentives. Working with the chamber is, is very important.
All right, thank you. Ms. Peterson? Can you repeat the question? What is the role of the county in creating jobs, and would you support tax incentives to more business to the county?
I think a county commissioner, county government has a key role in job creation. You know, one of the ways we do it is by making Buckham County as attractive as possible. We know New Belton came here because of our lifestyle, our greenways, and incentives. I think tax incentives are a natural follow. We have to do everything we can to make ourselves as attractive to promote Buckham County. We know it's a beautiful place, and it's going to stay beautiful by job creation, and yes, if we support incentives.
Thank you, Mr. Fryer.
I do support one incentive. When a county comes, the first thing the county has to do is, you know, restrictions and rules. You know, we've got to back off, you know, some of the restrictions to bring business. When you bring business, you give them an incentive of a tax break, you don't hand them dollars and cents. If they put so many people work over a certain percentage of years, then they, then they'll have their total tax break. But if they don't, you back it up. If they say they're going to hire 400, and they only hire 200, then you have to go back and take some of the break away from them, and their, their property taxes and stuff would go up at that point. So if they count, and they bring jobs, and it works, say 10 years of no property tax, at least it's not $8 million out of pocket.
Ms. Merrill?
We are a county of small businesses, a lot of entrepreneurs in Buckham County, and I've spent my career in Western North Carolina working with small businesses, and there is a resentment that incentives are going to outside businesses to bring them here. And I think that if there's going to be an incentive plan or program, it needs to also include our current businesses. We have to grow our businesses in Western North Carolina. There's breweries in, in Western North Carolina that were, that were started here, that have grown here, that employ people here, and when you give an outside brewery money to come here to compete with, with that brewery that was already here and thriving, you know, they could put them out of business. So we need to be careful that we're not putting our, our entrepreneurs out of business, and if we're going to operate incentives, they need to be across the board. We need to support all of the businesses. Thank you.
All right, we will start with you, Ms. Frost, for this one. Would you support green job creation to help build the economy while preserving our environment in what type?
This is a no-brainer. We love our environment. We want to keep everything as it is. That might get conservative, though. No, we certainly want to encourage green technology. And I remember somebody from the Sierra folks said to me, you know, how would you convince someone in a more conservative part of the county that green energy was good and green job creation was good? I said, as soon as they got their first living wage paycheck from installing solar panels, we would have more people on board. We, we need to, again, change the paradigm and encourage green, green jobs.
Would you support green job creation to help build the economy while preserving our environment in what type?
Green jobs are probably good in their own range, but other jobs are better at the present time. I have a friend who put a quarter million dollars' worth of solar panels on the roof of his building. Got the big tax break and the big money, but he was getting like 12 cents from the power company, but now it's down to 2.5 cents per kilowatt. So he says it's not that beneficial at the present time, but, you know, and we, who have the hypercars, understand that now. Hopefully, we have some oxygen cars, but we got a lot of natural gas. The main thing is we got to get some of the, the gas down. And the environment, I love there. The trees in there, they live carbon dioxide. They grow big, and lots of leaves fall off of it, so that's what makes our, so.
Ms. Merrill?
Can you repeat the question, please?
Would you support green job creation to help build the economy while preserving our environment in what type?
I think that green jobs are definitely a good thing, and preserving the economy is a good thing, but I think that you need to look at the benefit before putting a green job over another job that's quote-unquote "not green." You know, look at, at, you know, which area is, is better to put the energy or manpower into, and make sure that it's, it's the best thing for the county, and take it on a case-by-case basis. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Peterson.
Thank you. I definitely support green jobs. I think that this, this is another time when you have to have a balance in what you do, and I think that you could look to what county government's done in the past few years as far as green jobs are concerned, and the lead certification, for example, that we're going to have on the new courts building that's being built right now. The situation that we had at our Buckham County landfill, and the number of homes that are, the number of homes that are being served by electricity that's being generated from the gas from our landfill. The kinds of things that Buckham County government is doing stands as a good example of green jobs, and I think that's very important.
All right, thank you. We'll start with you, Mr. Fryer. Our mountains drug tourists and new residents, lots of high-end developments are being built just outside the city limits to avoid taxes. We've seen what happens when bubbles collapse, the county streets are infected, property values go down. Do you support long-range planning to protect the beauty and the financial viability of the county and the region? That's the harder question.
Well, yes, there was a lot of bone dolls in the mountains around here, and, but everything was great. Everybody said everything was going to stay great in the Asheville area, even when, when homes started going down. But developers tried, people, you know, and the government were letting people buy these homes with basically no money down. And so it's not all the people's fault, it's not all the developers' fault. I do want the mountains to stay good, but I want, I do believe in the property owners having their rights to do with their property as they see fit, not like county people or boards says that they can do with them. I sat and watched some people that wanted affordable home, like a $36,000 trailer on grandpa's lot and 2.5 acres, and they got turned down because the board decided they didn't want that there. So that's, that was only for the houses they had.
Ms. Merrill?
That was a very long question.
We'll just get to the heart of the question. Do you support long-range planning to protect the beauty and the financial viability of the county and the region?
This is an area that, that is of concern for many of our county citizens in, in being micromanaged and government trying to control and take over everything. I think that we need to allow people to have property as a source of freedom. We need to allow development to occur organically and not try and have the government's hand on everything. If it's something that is impacting the, the environment in a detrimental way, you know, we do already have certain restrictions in place that would handle that, but any more government right now, control is probably not something our county residents are looking for. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Peterson.
And would you repeat the previous question?
Do you support any long-range planning to protect the beauty and the financial viability of the county and the region?
Yes, absolutely.
Would you like to expand?
Well, we have many great county plans in the works. Of course, we have our zoning regulations, which have been received very nicely. Once folks realize that zoning is in place for the good of the folks who live in the county, you've got to have that long-range plan. We have, we're looking at a greenways plan. I realize that there are lots of obstacles that need to, to that need to be solved before that's put into place. And we want to go more to the citizens for that. But you have to have long-range plans. That's why you have folks elected to office to be with the citizens and hear their concerns and make decisions based on what they're sharing with you. But definitely, long-range plans, definitely.
Thank you, Ms. Frost. Do you need me to repeat the question?
I think I'm good.
Okay.
Certainly, we need a long-range plan. We need a long-range plan for a lot of areas. And I think, again, we need... We also, with that long-range plan, we need community input. When I go out and speak to voters, especially people, whether they have $100,000 home or $500,000 home or are ending with aspirations of having a home, they want to know wherever they invest it, it's going to be protected. And these are not restrictions or protections. Thank you.
All right, we'll start with you, Ms. Merrill. And this relates, actually, the next question to part of Ms. Peterson's answer. Do you support a bond referendum to voters to pay for the development of greenways in the county? And would you support the use of eminent domain to acquire property for the greenway?
There's a long and a short answer to that. I'll try and narrow it one at a time. We have a city of Asheville that already has greenways. We've created lots of parks. We have wonderful schools. One of the reasons given, I was at the board commission meeting to develop the greenways outside the city and throughout the entire county, was that our children are obese. And this would give them the opportunity to go run around on the greenways. Well, we have great places to run. We have neighborhoods where kids can ride their bikes. We have schools. We have sports programs. You go to any elementary school, middle school, high school, and you will see hundreds of kids out on the soccer and football fields. So spending $40 million and taxing our citizens for greenways right now when our families are losing their homes and struggling to make ends meet, does not make sense whatsoever. Thank you.
Ms. Peterson?
Do you mind repeating the question?
Absolutely. If I could find it. Do you support putting a bond referendum to voters to pay for the development of greenways in the county? And do you support the use of eminent domain to acquire property for greenways?
Answer the second part of the question. First, as a board of commissioners, we put into the adoption of the greenway plan... And let me underline this term, "plan," that we would not ask... have eminent domain to acquire any of the properties. I want to say very strongly that this is a plan. It's a recommendation from a group that worked about a year and a half on the plan. We also have a plan for an aquatic center. We have a plan to spruce up Lake Julian. We have a plan to work on the sports park. Let me say that these are plans. My thought is that our Parks, Recreation, and Greenway staff, and we've talked to them about this, need to come back with some priorities in order, speak to citizens, see what kinds of things the community is interested in our Parks, Recreation, and Greenways Department doing. Bond referendum at this time, no matter.
I think the greenways are a wonderful aspiration. And again, I think we need to have community input and make sure that it's a buy-in from all communities. And no, I would never support taking property through eminent domain for that. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Fryer?
No. It's real simple. It goes back to the candy. We're $100 million in debt, people, in this county. Once you add the ABT, $137 million. So how can we drive it up? And they say it won't be 40. It'll be 70 or $100 million for these greenways because you're looking at trying to buy people's property. I want to have a... That's what Christina said. Simple fact is, we have all these sports complexes. You can go to them. This greenway's not going to be in anybody's backyard. I'll tell you one little story. Ashville Motor Speedway. I make $62,000 a year down there. It's a greenway now. And the gentleman had it till last year. It's 27 lakes, 98,000 paid people come in to watch race cars. You show me another place in this area that can bring that many people into 27 lakes. No, I'm getting a little old and walking. Favor me down the mountain. I have to put some stops on my backup if I have to walk up.
All right, we're going to start with Ms. Peterson. So many of our children do not have enough food to eat. Other than our food bank, what can the county do?
Well, it is a huge responsibility. We need to make sure that our children are well-fed, and they need to not have to worry about that. We need to work with our school system. We need... I'd like you to know that during the summer, there was a summer feeding program where Buncombe County Parks and Rec and Buncombe County Schools and some of the other organizations in Buncombe County worked to feed about 20,000 students or 20,000 children per day. That's one thing that we can work with our partnering agencies to look at the problem and bring like minds together to solve it. But it is a great problem, and we do need to have everyone work on it.
And I will say that program we're speaking of was federally funded over the small $200 budget.
Yes, yes.
Before we go to you, I just want to remind people, if you have a question and you need a card, just raise your hand. We'll bring you a card. Then once you write your question down, hold the card up, and we'll collect it, and it will be brought to me. Ms. Frost, what can the county do regarding the food insecurity that happened with our children?
Well, I'm going to go back to living wage jobs as a long-term solution to this horrible, horrible problem. When we say those numbers and we think of the children, we need to personalize a little bit more to think it's somebody's daughter, somebody's son, somebody's grandson. And I think the county has done an admirable job so far. But while we still have existing children that are hungry when they go to school and have to participate in the backpack problem, we need to do more. We need to exhaust every possible resource with local business, extending more community partnerships. And Buncombe County has already done extending more. This has to be a top, top priority. And again, also working hand-in-hand with creating living wage jobs.
Thank you, Mr. Fryer.
I don't think children should be fed. But the simple fact is, you know, we are in bad times, and we are spending 25% of our DSS money on families. What have these people done with these food stamps and stuff they're getting? Or are these poor children? Are they buying drugs with it? What's going on here? Simple fact is, I want every child to eat. But when I got married, I decided two children was enough for me. But that's all I can afford. That's what I had. So we're subsidizing a lot of people. They have a lot of children, and they get a whole lot of money in subsidy. And we're still feeding them. Something's not right about the program. We need to look at the program. I want every child to eat, but I want us to look at the programs that's out there. I come up very poor because I'm orphaned. And the simple fact is, I ate. I've been blown, I've been pill-toe-banged. But I don't want anyone to starve. But it's responsibility of people and learning how many people that they can afford to starve.
And we will state that the food stamp program is a federal program. The food stamp program is a federal program. It's not administered by a county. Just... I know, I'm just letting the folks know. It's not an expense of the county directly. Ms. Merrill?
Yeah, this has been an increasing problem in Buncombe County and probably, I would imagine, statewide and nationally. And it is heartbreaking to see a child hungry. I not only am a parent of two grown sons, but I have a nine-year-old daughter. And throughout the entire time that my children were growing up in the Buncombe County school systems, I've been on those ballfields. And I coached kids, and I've seen kids come to the ballfield starting and not having anything to eat all day or all weekend. And, you know, I, as a parent and county commissioner, would support anything that we could do to help feed our children. And I think one of the best things we could do is put our parents back to work. And in order to put our parents back to work, we need to make sure that we're bringing in the kind of variety of jobs and giving them opportunities, growing our small businesses. I think it goes back to... It will always go back to putting people back to work. But in the meantime, we absolutely need to take care of our children. Thank you.
All right, we're going to start... You answered your question. I apologize. We're going to start with Ms. Frost. There is a perception of conflict between the rural areas and our cities. What is your perception of the city-county divide? And do cities endanger rural areas economically and/or socially?
I think there's a perception of, by a small bubble of people, that there is disenfranchisement between the city and the county. And we can fall into that old trap. There's a wonderful non-for-profit called Code for America. They go around the country, and they solve these sorts of issues of lack of sharing of data. They call it sharing data. They come up with innovative ways to create more partnerships between cities and counties. Buncombe County is not unique to this. At any time, we approach any relationship with, "Oh, we have a problem with them." It's never going to go far. We have to remember that Asheville, in many instances, is an economic driver for the county and the county drive the city of Asheville by subsidizing their businesses.
Thank you, Mr. Fryer.
I'll take that question.
There is a perception of conflict between rural areas and the cities. What is your perception of the city-county divide? And do cities endanger rural areas economically and/or socially?
None of the way that they endanger them is annexation. That is... That was a big issue. I got involved, got around politics in 2004. That's endangerment. Then you have an ETJ, extraterritorial area one mile outside the cities that they can control, but the people don't have a vote. So yes, there is areas. But there is areas in the city and county that we should be trying to combine, like the parks and recs and other things like that, that would benefit awful. But, you know, the simple fact is, there is... The annexation thing, when they had to tow them to a rock, they used it very wisely. When I got annexed, the gentleman told me... This was his words, Mr. Schufert said. I said, "Why are you doing this?" And I said, "I just have one Porsche." He said, "Well, I just think as a city, as a business, and when it needs money, it has to do whatever it needs to do to get it." So I have a bad taste for annexation of them. Thank you.
Ms. Merrill?
Can you repeat the question?
There is perception of conflict between the rural areas and our cities. What is your perception of the city-county divide? And do cities endanger rural areas economically and/or socially?
Yeah, that was cities plural. And I think the only differences I've seen mainly would be between the city of Asheville and the entire county. And I think there's a lot of people who live outside the city limits that feel that they haven't had a voice on the commission to represent their different needs than someone who might live within the city limits. So that's been a bit of a divide. And I think the districting will give us that opportunity to have a balance on the county commission. And I think balance is a good thing. We are a community that is a tapestry of different people, and we should have different perspectives on that commission. One area I think that we can be proactive and work together as a county and a city to save our taxpayers some money is we have the city school systems and the county school systems. And we're sort of doubling up on a lot of budget areas. And I think that we might be able to integrate those two and work more efficiently as a county as a whole. Thank you.
Ms. Peterson?
One more time, the question, please. There's perception of conflict between the rural areas and our cities. What's your perception of the city-county divide? Do cities endanger rural areas economically and/or socially?
Well, number one, you've got to look at Buncombe County as a total unit. And within that total unit, you have not only Asheville, but you have four other municipalities. The one that we're sitting in right here, Black Mountain. And you need to look at what each one of those municipalities brings to the total county tapestry, as Ms. Merrill said. And I think we need to embrace those differences rather than trying to add more division to that. You need to look at Buncombe County not only as involving folks who live on a farm or folks who live on Broadway or folks who are small business owners or folks who have moved in here for retirement, but you need to look at the total population in Buncombe County and look at us as a total unit. This is another place where I... It really bothers me that folks want to think there's a divide between Buncombe County government and the city of Asheville. And if there's one group that we work very closely with as commissioners, that's our Asheville City Council. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Ms. Peterson. I have an answer. I'm going to go ahead and branch 30 seconds more. Would anyone...
I think as long as we continue to divide, we are never going to progress. When we look at Buncombe County as totality, it's an extraordinary place. It's an extraordinary place because it embraces so many differences. And we have to applaud those differences, not let them divide us.
Anybody else like... Any more time on that? Mr. Fryer?
Well, the city says that the county... Asheville City, not Black Mountain. Asheville City says that the county comes and uses their resources. While Asheville is 33% of Buncombe County, they use 47% of the DSS. 61% of the people in jail in Buncombe County are from the city of Asheville. So, you know, I think we try to help, as Ms. Peterson says, we're trying to help the city faithful, too.
Ms. Merrill, do you have?
Yeah, I was thinking about something that Nathan Ramsey said earlier. I think that it's very important, regardless of party affiliation, to have reasonable people elected to our county commission that can work across party lines to solve problems for our citizens of our entire county. So that's going to be really important in this election is to have people that can work together to solve some of these problems.
Just one more thought about that. Everyone, if you live in the city of Asheville or in Black Mountain, you are a Buncombe County resident. I think folks tend to forget that everyone who lives in Buncombe County is a Buncombe County resident. And the core services that Buncombe County provides, health and human services, funding education, safety, all those are used by every citizen of Buncombe County. So if you live in Black Mountain, if you live in Weaverville, if you live in Montree, if you live in Boon Forest, regardless of which one of the cities, municipalities you live in, you are a resident of Buncombe County. And that's when you stand up and you're proud.
Thank you, Ms. Peterson. We have two main questions, and we will start with Mr. Fryer. Regarding the redistricting done by the state legislature, where parts of the county were carved up to benefit certain representatives? This is the question. How can counties and citizens be heard by the state to reverse this trend? I think what they want to know is what can be done for citizens to be heard on redistricting? Can the process be changed? Is there a better way?
What I understand in the process is supposedly... Maybe I'm totally wrong. It's either 10 or 20-year. It's put out there so that...
With the census. You got to be right. It's done with the census. You're correct.
Right. So we're going to be the same. And then the people of Buncombe County can make a decision whether they like the way that we're doing. They put it on a four-year, two-year. So anybody up here, the first person that you... The person that gets the most votes out of this floor will have four years. The person that gets the second amount of votes will have a two-year. And in two years, they will have to... The person that finishes second, if they want to rerun, have to rerun. So it's going to be alternate elections after this election. But I personally, it's... I don't think my district... This district, too, is broken up to help one or the other. It's very close party to party in this district. It's very close party to party in this district. So it's just the people we need to be working for. We don't need to worry about the party.
And the election is different this time because we have added seats to the Buckham County Commission Board as put into effect by the legislature this past session. Ms. Merrill?
Can you repeat the whole question?
I hope so. Regarding the redistricting done by the state, I'll repeat it exactly. Where parts of the county were carved out, can, how can counties and citizens be heard by the state to reverse this trend? I think what they're trying to get at is, is there a better process or does this process work?
I think this is a good process. I think this is an opportunity to give all county citizens a vote in electing their commissioners. And the other good thing about it, too, is if you have a commissioner elected from your part of the county, you're going to have someone that's invested in your committee that knows what's going on, you know, in the eastern part of the county versus the western part of the county. So I think that it's going to give people the opportunity to have more personal, personal relationship with their representatives. And once elected, you know, you work with your county commissioners to do the best to represent all people of the county. I don't, I think that the way the system is set up right now is probably a fair one, and I think it's a good opportunity for our citizens.
Ms. Peterson.
Just going to jump right in and I'll ask you to repeat it. I'd like to say again that Buckham County Commissioner work is county-wide. Regardless of whether you run for, and are fortunate to be elected from District Two or District One, District Three, regardless of the district, the work that you do, the decisions that you make are county-wide decisions. Now, you are going to listen. If I'm lucky enough to get elected, if someone in the Efta-Candler area comes to me with a situation, they want me to hear from them, there's no question I'm going to do that. If someone from Black Mountain does that, I'm going to do that. That's no different from what you do if you're elected to county-wide office, and that's what county commissioning is. As far as how you can reverse this, a lot of decisions that are made can be reversed at the ballot box. So if you do not like the way state legislature decided that this county commission at the local level was going to be elected...